Roll call for the City Council meeting on Wednesday, May 21st, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Council President Witherspoon, Members Brzezinski, Flores, Schaff, Titus, and Trup. Councilmember Nelson is absent.
Thank you. We'd like to ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal, just for all.
Approval of the minutes of the Wednesday, May 7th, 2025 City Council meeting and bills for payment on May 23rd and 30th. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Schaff, Titus, Trup, Witherspoon.
Do we have repository sales here?
We don't have a presentation, so you could go right into that.
Repositories?
There. Any repository sales? Please come up to the podium. Go ahead.
Oh, it's for 1910 Whitley Avenue. And I just bought the house next door, so I was just gonna buy the vacant lot beside it.
You have some questions there in front of you?
Yeah. Well, I mean, not just the ones you guys sent me.
There's a list, too, if you can answer those.
Oh, is the property vacant or have a structure? It's vacant. What are your plans? I'm just gonna have an extra yard for the house. And the condition's good. It's okay. Just a yard. And I don't live in Erie. I live in Cambridge Springs, so it's a rental property. The house I bought's a rental property. And then I've had no code violations, and my tenants take care of the yard.
Are you gonna enclose the yard into your property? Or is it just gonna be open? Is this open?
I think it's just gonna be open. Yeah.
Could you tell me where that's located? I'm not familiar with that.
Whitley? I'm not real familiar with Erie either, but it's, um... I don't know. It's off of Buffalo Road by, like, Erie County Farms.
You said it was, it was 1910. What was the street name?
Whitley.
Whitley.
Are there any other questions from council? Well, we thank you very much for purchasing that property. We will not vote on it tonight. We'll vote on it at our next meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How are you doing, council?
Hello?
I'm here for June Street. It was on 2098 June Street.
Your name, please?
My name's LaKell Porter.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, the questions I don't have in front of me, um, okay, they're right here. Yeah, it's vacant. It's a vacant property. The plan was for developing. And the condition, it's like grass on it. It's just overgrown grass, need cut. Do I live near? Yes, I do live in Erie. I'm not far from that property. And the maintenance, I'll probably do the maintenance. It's just, it's just a vacant lot, so.
What?
No, I have no code violations either.
Are there any specific plans you have for the property?
Um, I'm starting actually a real estate company with developing, so infrastructure could get developed on it. If it's approved by the city, then that's what I would do with it.
Any other questions from council?
No, just, we appreciate you wanting to take up one of the blighted property. We favor city residents wanting to accumulate the, you know, land that we have, and that you want to actually clean it up is a great thing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Also, just remember, like you said, you had mentioned that it does, anything you put on there does have to go through zoning and be approved by the city. Thank you.
Correct. Any more questions?
Thank you very much. We won't vote on it today. We'll vote on it at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We are at our public comments. If there's anyone that'd like to address council, you have five minutes. Please give us your name and your county, or not county, but your district that you live in. Yes.
My name's Freda Tepfer, and I live in the city of Erie. I had a couple of questions. There is, on the agenda, there's an item, and it's typical, it's number six. It's about a capital fund. It's a very large, um, number six, $1,189,944. I just would like to request, as a member of the public, that you chronically put this stuff on the agenda, and there's absolutely no information available. And the city clerk is very helpful and provides more information when I ask her, but I'll bet there's a lot of us out there that are wondering, what the heck are they doing with a million, $189,000? And if there's some way to put more money, more information in the agenda, that would be appreciated. Also, on number three, the red light go, I'm, I'm wondering, I understand that there's gonna be red light go money going for signal upgrades on West 18th Street, and I hope that this doesn't impact that. When I'm talking about signal upgrades, I do wanna mention, I was on a Safe Streets field trip with Pendot and other people in the community, and when I asked, why is there no, um, no APS, accessible pedestrian signal at 26 and State, which is where we conducted our trip, this traffic engineer said, well, that's because the light regularly cycles for pedestrians, so we don't need an APS, we don't need a PED button there. Well, maybe don't need a PED button, but if you're blind, it gives you no information about what's going on there. And I'm kind of amazed that we had a lot of signal upgrades along 26th Street, which is a state highway that Pendot was involved with, but somehow they decided not to bother to put in an APS on a very, the school is there, the stadium is there, there's bus stops all over the place. Why, why is there no APS there? There should be an APS there. The rental item, first reading number one, is there a limit on how much deposit a landlord can require of a tenant, or is it just kind of a free-for-all, whatever any one particular rental company wants to charge is up to them? With the zoo, I understand there's an need to have, if you're working with Erie Events, they want more acres, and just to be aware that people in the city cherish the woodland adjacent to the zoo and the park, and that we would wanna be involved in any kind of decision that involves any change to the woodland there. Lastly, with the fire department and enforcement authority of the fire marshal, I hope that anything that is granted to the fire marshal in, in terms of currently non-existent enforcement ability, even if they're just ticketing, that it's very clearly spelled out, that it's very clearly defined what the limits are. And are these people who are trained in de-escalation techniques and dealing with mental health crises for people in crisis and people who might have mental health issues? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cole Schenley. I live in Erie, PA. I, I'm here to talk about the situation with Tulio Towers. Read about it in the news today. It was not on my radar until today, because the news just reported on it. But it really concerns me. If you're not aware, the residents in the Tulio Towers, their elevators don't work. They, one elevator hasn't worked in months, and then they, I guess, as of this past Friday, the other elevator went bust. And there are residents on, like, the ninth floor who can't get down because of the issues that they have with mobility and whatnot. And it's pretty scary stuff. And it hits home for me because in the last couple of years, my mother has had, lived in an independent living apartment at St. Joseph's for a while, and then now she's over at Nightingale in the nursing home there. I know some of you have known my mother. She, the last couple of years, she's had dementia and has had to be in those kinds of spaces. And so I've been in buildings that residents, like the ones in Tulio Towers, like, live in, and the idea that somebody is on the ninth floor and can't easily get down is terrifying because what happens if there's a fire? The county apparently met with the people today and put out some kind of 911 alert thing. I gotta be honest, I read the news article in Erie News Now, and it, I, there's a Public Enemy song called 911 is a Joke, and I think that Brent Davis is trying to invoke that with how sloppy and messed up his response was. These elevators need to be fixed ASAP. I know that this is a privately held place by, I think, Penrose is the name of the apartment developer that owns the place. But I know that in the news, one of the, like, a nurse's aide or something like that was talking to a manager there, and they were very sarcastic and kind of mean, and made comments, well, if I had the part to fix the elevator, I'd do it. But that seems crazy to me that it's like, there's a nine-floor apartment, you know, nine floors of this apartment and building, and you literally have people who can't get down and can't go to doctor's appointments, as was talked about in this news article. I really hope the city gets involved and helps remedy this situation as quickly as possible. We don't need something like what happened in Grenfell Towers in, in England, when people were trapped in a burning apartment building and died. It was a really horrible tragedy there. We don't need that in our downtown. So, please, please, do what you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed, is that something our fire depart, fire inspector would do?
Ed, he asked a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ed.
That's all right. I'm tired, too.
Oh, no, no.
Is that with the Tulio Towers situation, is that something our fire inspector would get involved with?
I mean, I think code and fire both could, to a degree, I mean, this is a unique issue. It's a, it's a very important issue, but I don't know that it directly relates to fire, even though that's immediately where our head goes. You can't use an elevator in, in a fire. And so if there were a fire in a, with two running elevators, the remedy is to use the stairwell. So I don't know that it directly relates to fire, but certainly we'll share this, I think, I think they're aware of it, but we will share, share it to the extent and have discussions with both the fire department as well as code.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yes?
Good evening. Rue Kojancy, I reside in Lawrence Park. I'm speaking tonight as the president and CEO of the zoo. So, good evening. I am here this evening to thank Attorney Betza, Councilmember Titus, and Councilmember Brzezinski for meeting with myself and Erie Zoological Society Board Chair Jeff Beach. I am happy to share that the zoo found this to be a productive meeting today, and we now respectfully ask that the city follow up from our meeting to schedule a meeting with Erie Events to continue the discussions regarding the city transferring ownership of the zoo from the city to Erie Events. As we know, yesterday was a busy day at the primaries, and we now know that there will be a change in city leadership. I wanna thank the mayor for the support he has shown for the zoo over his years in office. It is vital that council and the administration keep the zoo's needs at the top of your minds during this time of city change. The zoo's financial need and our urgency to move forward toward the Erie event solution has not changed and must remain a top priority. I cannot stress enough that doing nothing is not a neutral decision. This is something that the zoo urgently needs, and not obtaining consistent operational support would, over time, severely impact zoo operations and diminish the quality of zoo that the community has come to, to love and appreciate. I wanna thank our amazing, I wanna publicly thank our amazing supporters who have reached out to many of you urging action on the proposal. The number of emails that you've received demonstrate strong community support, and the results of the poll published today by the Erie Times News highlights an overwhelming vote, highlights by overwhelming vote, the community's support and their stance on moving forward with this proposed plan. We look forward to continuing these discussions with council and the mayor's office as we work towards the proposed solution that will ensure a bright and vibrant future for the zoo. In the meantime, I invite everyone to come out to experience your zoo in a new light by attending our Glow Wild Chinese Lantern Festival, which runs Thursdays through Sundays, now through June 15th. It's a dazzling experience, full of light and sound, illuminated lanterns displays, cultural performances. Not only is it an amazing experience for our community, it is a key revenue driver for us. So please, I encourage everyone to come out, have a great time, and support your zoo. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good evening, everyone. Bob Strausser, Erie's Lower East Side. And in my efforts to continue to try to advocate for the east side and the city as a whole, tonight I'm going to try to speak about the financial things, since I'm an independent, highly fiscally conservative person. And I'm gonna talk at the, about the overall higher level at the federal government again, and how that will affect the state and local, in this case, our city. As yous all may know, I just saw a story, I believe, yesterday or the day before about the funding for the sand replenishment program for Presque Isle, and that half that money is not gonna be there in the coming year at the federal level, which means the state running that park is gonna be scrambling to try to make up that difference. So hopefully, some things will be worked out, you know, in the near future to take care of that or be restored at the federal level. I think there's gonna be a lot of continued chaos at the federal level with the way that things currently are going and the president's economic plans. I'm hoping that the strategies that he's taken are gonna pay off, considering using the tariffs and all that, but to negotiate better deals between us and other nations and bring revenue and jobs back here to the states, I'll be paying close attention to that. But from the local level here, what I would like to see, in addition to myself, is the administration that's in until January, and we'll probably have a new administration after that, and same thing with council, we'll have some new council members, that we're all paying attention to what's going on with all that. And if great wealth is, as he says, going to come, what's gonna be our share of that? What are we going to do to make sure that we here in Erie get our share? Or maybe even a little bit more, if we play our cards right and stuff? So there's a lot of factors, though. You know, the country still has between a $36 and a $37 trillion deficit. I think the days of printing money, as we've done over the last few decades, are pretty much gone, so things are gonna have to be done a lot more, with a lot more oversight and accountability for the fundings that are available. So, like I said, it's very important to keep an eye on that and to get what we can for Erie. I will definitely continue to do my research and stuff on that and hopefully look to look for some revenue at, at the federal level for the Lower East Side of Erie and the city as a whole. And in the meantime, we could still look at some other strategies, like looking at some public-private partnerships to help us here in the city outside of the city of Erie. Erie Insurance and a few other bigger companies that we have here, and maybe including the hospitals and the universities, they're, you know, they're only limited into how much they have. So I think we've kind of been forced into looking outside of Erie to help us out and develop. So that's all I have for tonight, and thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none. Ms. Watson?
Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 16523, official ordinance 34/2025, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $10,000,000. of $10,500 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof for the Penelac Generator Revenue. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16523, official file ordinance 342025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council passed official file ordinance 342025, finally by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16524, official ordinance 352025, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $500,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof for upgrades to the Erie Zoo Otter Exhibit to be completed as a sub-grantee. Pass through funding is provided from the Pennsylvania Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, RACP grant. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the Council File Ordinance Number 16524, now known as official file ordinance 352025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council passed official file ordinance 352025, finally by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16525, official ordinance 362025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $55,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from PennDOT through the 2023 Automated Red Light Enforcement, A R L E, funding program. The funds will be used to carry out the City of Erie LED Street Light Upgrade Project. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16525, and now known as official file ordinance 362025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council passed official file ordinance 362025, finally by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16526, official ordinance 372025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $40,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof for signage at the South Central Fire Station using grant proceeds from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, C E A P, contract number C 000093428. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16526, and now known as official file ordinance 372025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council passed official file ordinance 372025, finally by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16527, official ordinance 382025, appropriating the sum of $51,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof for using grant proceeds from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, C E A P, contract number C 000093603. Sponsored by Councilmember Brzezinski, seconded by Councilmember Troop, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16527, and now known as official file ordinance 382025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council passed official file ordinance 382025, finally by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16528, official ordinance 392025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $1,189,944 from the unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof in the capital fund. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16528, and now known as official file ordinance 392025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council passed official file ordinance 392025, finally by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16529, an ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Erie, namely Article 354, Rental Housing, specifically to amend Section 35405A that established the rights and obligations of owners and occupants of rental housing in the City of Erie, in particular, the rights under federal, state, and local laws that apply to the landlord-tenant relationship. Sponsored by Councilmember Flores, seconded by Councilmember Schaff, the Council File Ordinance Number 16529, have been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council pass, read and adopt, Council File Ordinance 16529 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16530, an ordinance amending Article 131 Bureau of Fire to add sections that amend the duties and/or responsibilities of the Office of Chief Fire Marshal and Fire Marshal to improve the safety of buildings throughout the city, to prevent fires or fire hazard throughout the city, and to permit the issuance of citations and/or enforcement of traffic laws in specific circumstances. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16530, have been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council passed official file ordinance 16530 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council President, this takes us to new business.
Put forward a motion for new business.
I'm going to go quick. Moving the balance of the agenda, Councilmembers Brzezinski, Flores, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. Council President, this takes us to committee reports.
Another committee report. Let's start with Councilwoman Barrett.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. I just wanted to report that the Planning Commission had a meeting at 1:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 20th, which was yesterday, Election Day. Thank you, Erie residents, for showing up for Election Day. It's really appreciated. Erie Parking Authority Board Meeting was at 9:00 a.m. on May 13th, and then we will have an Environmental Advisory Council Meeting at 3:00 p.m. on May 28th. These meetings are able to be rewatched on our YouTube and our Facebook channel, the City, what is it, City of Erie Government, I believe. And then we have been given the City of Erie 2025 Summer Recreation Guide. I definitely recommend that the Erie residents pick up a copy of this or look online so that they know what's coming up in the next coming weeks. We have our 814 Concert Series, and then along with any community event that they're going to be doing in the coming months. So if you would like to participate with your family in free community events, definitely look up one of these copies at the erie.p a.us website to get that, or pick one up right here at City Hall. I don't really have much else to report outside of, with it getting warm, please make sure that we're looking out for pedestrians who are in the streets. With a lot of road construction, it's kind of hard for them to navigate the city. We have a lot of elderly, we have a lot of physically unable people who need a little bit more time than a lot of these lights give them. So just, you know, be vigilant. I don't need us to have any more tragedies. There's been so many motor vehicle accidents and bike accidents and scooter accidents that it's just starting, and I fear what we are going to have in the coming months. So let's just do our part to keep our community and our city safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Titus.
Thank you. On 5/19, EMTA met, and they are continuing to work diligently to fill the positions that they have open. Their director has been a phenomenal advocate and is lobbying for additional state funding to make sure that they're supporting the services that they are offering. And I also wanted to congratulate their new board member that we just approved tonight on the agenda. We had talked about this in caucus, but just so it's also in the liaison report, myself and Councilperson Brzezinski, along with Attorney Betsa, met with the Erie Zoological Society Director and Board President, that's a word, met today, and I felt really confident after leaving there. I do think that we are, and I feel like I say this every time, but I do feel like now we're taking a solid step in making sure that we, as a city, are supporting our zoo and making sure they're staying thriving and are going to be a regional asset. So I look forward to the next meetings that we're going to be scheduling and having. The Erie Land Bank met this Monday. I was unable to attend due to another work conflict that I had. Last Friday, I attended the Erie Chambers Knowledge Breakfast to learn more about the CRIS and how that funding is projected to be prioritized, how they're going to, you know, obtain it, and then how it's going to be issued out. And if anybody has any shovel-ready projects, I strongly encourage you to reach out to the Director of the CRIS Authority, Brian Polito, and see how that might also be a supplement to what you're doing. And finally, I just want to thank everybody who ran for office. Local elections are personal. The candidates are our friends, they're our neighbors, they're our family members. So the hopes are personal, the hurts are personal. And thank you to everyone who ran and supported those who ran. And at the center of all of this, it's always about serving community, and community is to and should always be at the core. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Councilman Ed Brzezinski.
How do you want to go? Mr. Schaff, follow me. Remember what Double T. said over there about the zoo? We all met. He already told you everything that we're going to do, and hopefully we'll come to some kind of an agreement. We've been talking about it for way too long. It's time to move forward and get something done. That's Erie Events taking care of. The Port Authority, it's a crazy, crazy weekend coming up. The taxi that takes, the boat taxi going from the bay over to Peninsula kicks off Friday, I think at 10:00 in the morning, for the maiden voyage for the summer. You can still get discounted tickets if you go to portierauthority, I think it is, dot com and get set up there. The campgrounds are ready and filling up, from what I understand. The marina is pretty much done, full-service marina with utilities included. It's kind of nice for the east side, very nice, anyway. The Port Authority is doing a great job with that. And other than that, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Troopsky here. He came over to Holy Trinity for the closing of the primary, and he twinkle all those folks. So we made him an honorary Polish kid that evening. He did very well. Congratulations. Jasmine, congratulations also. All done.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Troop.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to start off with thanks to all the residents, citizens that participated in the election yesterday, and congratulations to all the candidates who ran. It's definitely a daunting task. Thanks to all the people that are here tonight, citizens, specifically people from the zoo. You know, the zoo is very important. I remember Sundays with my kids at the zoo, so I do remember that. Thanks to Freda, Cole, and Bob for coming out today and speaking. And I just want to remind the community that the Redevelopment Authority is here at our evening meetings. If you have questions in regards to things that need to be addressed with the Redevelopment Authority, you can come down and take care of those, ask questions, do applications, things like that. And one other thing is, I spoke to the people from the Downtown Partnership. They want to thank the city, the fire department, the streets department, Public Works for helping them to put on their programming for the summer. There's going to be over 100 free family-friendly events this summer, including concerts, movies, farmers' markets, yoga, and lots of different things. So just take advantage of that as Councilwoman Flores said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman.
Thank you, President. Witherspoon, I just want to say I'll be using Councilmember Chuck Nelson's five minutes to go along with mine today. He is not a sore loser, that's why he's not here. He had a family commitment, and we all agree that family is more important than city when you have a family commitment. So just to put that out there. I attended the towing and review board appeals meeting that we had, and it always helps if you put in, now, again, if you live out of state, obviously you can't appeal it in person sometimes because you can't be there, but it does matter if you did put an appeal in to show up. It makes a difference, just to put that out there. The Erie Redevelopment Authority had a meeting Monday, May 12th, at 3:30 p.m. that I was there for, and I would like to thank Kendra Wilson from the Erie Redevelopment Authority who was out there this evening with any questions. Kendra put on an excellent presentation that was at the Booker T. Washington the other day, but she is moving on from the Redevelopment Authority, so this is her last week, and I wish her all the very best in her new endeavors. She was an awesome person with their group. I met her a couple years ago when I was working at the front desk, and I know she'll put all of her compassion with the people and put it into her next job that she'll be at. So best wishes to Kendra as she moves on and furthers her commitment here in Erie. The week before, the Erie Fire had 175 calls for service, and they did have three illegal burns. As we move into our summer season with the Memorial Day kickoff into summer, please remember that you should not be burning without proper things around it for a fire circle that you're going to have cooking food at and things like that. They had their firefighters recruiting, training in Ohio as well, and the memorial service was held last week that I attended in Perry Square honoring the deceased police officers that had died in the line of service here in Erie. It was in Perry Square, and it was a somber, momentous occasion that they have every year, and families and loved ones and other officers in our community gather together every year for that. I attended the Erie Zoning Hearing Board on May 13th, and the gentleman had withdrawn his appeal at the time, and I found out if you are having Amish builder-construction people, you need to pull your permit for them because they don't do that. So just a lesson overall that you do have to follow the City of Erie permitting licenses that we have for the city. Don't just assume that your construction company will do it. You have to, when you're making your contract with the construction people, who is going to be pulling permits for the city. We had a solicitors' meeting last May. We had a solicitor's meeting last May 14th. I attended the police swearing-in ceremony of four new officers, and they're complimenting the officers that are retiring. It's not like we're adding, adding, adding. As the year goes on, officers retire, go off into the sunset. We need more officers. And it was good to see that the motorcycle officers were having training at the Liberty Park, and now we have officers training on mountain bikes, so that there will be 10 officers taking the mountain bike class. So that we'll have 40 officers certified later on this week or so for mountain biking around Erie, helping us that way. So I attended this morning. It was good to see everybody on Cameron Road. They had taken a blighted property that had been vacant for about five years, and the redevelopment authority redid the inside of it with beautiful appliances, and they had a beautiful open house, and it's now up for sale. So that's what we want to see, properties being taken off that blighted list, worked over, and put back into, for people to use. And in one of those meetings, whether it was land bake or redevelopment, the West Sixth Street property by Vermont there on the corner will be having a new house. There's a person buying that and building a house on that block. So that was wonderful news as well. This past Thursday, I attended the Water Authority meeting, and they are operational and doing well. Just to let you know that our drinking water is safe. Some people buy bottled water, and I've been using regular tap water my whole life. We do buy water sometimes for parties because sometimes people don't like drinking tap water. But I've been here 60-some years in life, still drinking tap water. I like the sign, "Without water, you can't make Kool-Aid, you can't make lemonade, you can't make beer." So water is good, and it's needed, and we need to hydrate. So they do want to, to let the word out, that their water is safe. And they have a report, they usually send that to the House, too. I know with my water bill, and it says, you know, how they pass all of their requirements. Mr. Brzezinski, you didn't say that I saw you and Cheryl last Thursday at the Benevolent Beers for the Meals on Wheels. Mr. Brzezinski and his wife Cheryl are wonderful volunteers, and Meals on Wheels are looking for people who volunteer on a weekly basis to give our community members free meals. So that's a wonderful thing. Someday when I'm retired, I would like to do that, too. On Friday, Perry Square at 3:00 p.m. had a Taylor's Hope event. I've been attending this now for three years. I had a person in the car today who said, "Well, what's this in this box?" And I said, "That's my Narcan." And like, "Well, what's that used for?" And I have it with me, just in case I come across a person that has overdosed, and I tend to use it following the simple directions there. But it's a personal thing for me because I do know Taylor's family, and I have neighbors that have passed away in my own lovely neighborhood from drug overdoses. So I just want everyone to know, you need to be educated because sometimes you may have a loved one living in your home that you're not even aware of perhaps, who needs help. So we all need to get the help when we can. Sunday, City Gallery had a performance that was a jazz performance and had the music of Thessaloniki Monk, excuse me. And they had a musician come in from Buffalo. He was an excellent saxophonist, and there was a woman there named Amelia who had an absolutely wonderful voice, and Steve Trachowski as well played. And there was, I met a 17-year-old young man, I think he's from Collegiate, and he was in this jazz band performance playing the drums. And, you know, if you know anything about music, jazz is different than rockabilly, rock and roll, what have you. It has its own style. But this young man was 17 years old, so I do support the arts. I do support music. And I said to, I just happened to be sitting next to his mom, and I said, "Wow, like, how did he get to be this way?" And she said, and in front of us was his grandfather, and his grandfather had music in the house. And, you know, it just got me to thinking about my own family and how my grandmother would play Pocas on Sundays when we went to see her. But music in the household, in the schools, you never know how it's affecting people and how you can get them interested in the arts and music. So he's definitely, definitely, definitely going places. So for our police statistics this week, we had the most calls of the year as the weather gets warmer. 1,356 calls, 47 alarms, 145 domestics, 136 disturbances, 40 thefts, 20 burglaries, 18 assaults, nine weapons, 49 motor vehicle accidents, and assisting other agencies, 54. Now, the chief sent out that on May 13th, detectives obtained their first warrant for the shooting of a house last week. The first of the three suspects were identified, a 17-year-old male. May 15th, there was a stabbing. Officers responded to a stabbing in the 400 block of West 27th. A 62-year-old male was stabbed. May 15th, there was a weapon traffic stop at 12th and Sassafras. Three males, 17 years old, 19 and 20, found a handgun, and the suspect, one suspect in call, in the gun call, that was last week. This is an alarming situation. They call these lurings. May 13th, the 12-year-old female stated that a black male in the 40s perhaps tried to lure her into a wooded area near the 1900 block of McCain. And this isn't the only luring incident. There was another one that saw a 10-year-old female being lured into a red SUV on Lighthouse Street. The juvenile did not get in, and there was another one, too, I think. But I remember when the police used to come to our schools and talk about that to us when we were kids, how you don't talk to strangers that come up to you and things like that. And we always used to run to the BP houses. That meant Block Parent. We used to know that the BP houses, Block Parent houses, were the safe house to go to in case you were in trouble. So that is alarming. The officers were dispatched on May 14th to a disturbance with a gun involved on German Street. With assistance, detectives proceeded to suspect residents and located a total of three guns, a 3.57 handgun, 9-millimeter handgun, and a ghost gun, and an AK-47 chambered as a 9-millimeter. At 5:14, a mother of a recent shooting victim had a threat. The male came over looking for a victim of a shooting and was waving a gun around. The suspect known, 17-year-old, is a suspect in a shooting. There was a 17-year-old male with a gun making threats against a family member. And there was a stolen auto. Gannon Police saw a car go by at a high rate of speed. Three teens were fleeing from the car. Officers found two juveniles, 16 and 17, with a stolen auto. And there were officers sent to Maxwell for a domestic between females, one waving a gun at another. And another sad one, where a 23-year-old male was upset over a $7 notary fee and pulled out a gun and threatened the employees there in the notary. So the good news is about the mountain bike officers that are in training, and hopefully this Memorial Day weekend will be a safe weekend honoring our deceased soldiers and people who have died in the service. And my own family relatives, my second cousin's father has his name up in the memorial park on State Street for passing away during World War II. I just want to say thank you, and live your life and drive safely, because the life you save may be your own. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, yes.
I'd like to respectfully ask the administration to take a real serious look at abandoning this crazy-ass bike path program. Share the highway with the bikes and the vehicles. Tear down them damn signs on Green Garden that have been driving the folks crazy until at least this bike path is put together. If you go up Parade Street on your bike and you follow the bike path, you'll go right into the brick wall, right before the bridge. That's our bike path. You've got areas where the bike path stops, and then all of a sudden the shepherds are there, and you share it with the bikes anyway, and the cars. We need to get a real plan together. This is in Barcelona. If you're in Spain, the roads are this wide, I mean, really wide, and there's room for two lanes of traffic, there's rooms for two lanes of bike lanes, and there's room for people to walk. We don't have those kind of streets in this town. You can't get down French Street, because when you get down to 26th Street, it's one way going south. The whole bike path was made up by people who didn't live, I'm getting on a soapbox, I don't want to get that carried away. Please take a serious look at that, because we've hurt a lot of people. I don't know during the campaign, if you went up and down Brzezinski Boulevard. That's Green Garden. I didn't ask those folks to put that sign up there for me, but I still am fighting for them. Please take a serious look, because that, I understand, part of Green Garden is on the paving. I will not vote to give you more paint to put a new bike lane in after you paved the damn road. I mean, it's crazy. I'm done, I'm sorry.
Mr. Witherspoon, I apologize. I have one more important thing to say.
Oh, Jesus, not necessary. Go ahead.
Freda and I, when we did our walks under the underpasses, had found that there was insufficient lighting. And I do want the public to know that we are on it at City Hall. I reported it and had a talk with the engineering department, and they are meeting with Pennalec because Pennalec are the people that provide our lighting under the underpasses. And I am going to be presented with the results of the upcoming meeting with Pennalec and the engineering department. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good point.
You mind if I, Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to say something about what Councilwoman Shaw said. She mentioned the 17-year-old drummer. His parents are named, his father is Jeffrey Hobson, and his mother is a Noah Hobson, and his grandfather is Reverend Olin Rhodes. So his parents are musicians and bandmates of mine, actually, for a long time. So I've been seeing him grow up, so I'm really proud of what they've done. And they're also introducing their other son to play on the guitar now. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Jason?
I'll defer the solicitor's report to Attorney, Solicitor's report to Attorney Betsa.
Thank you.
We got nothing.
I wasn't going to ask you today. Administration.
I'll be quick. So just a couple things. So the $55,000 ARL grant is from 2023 Funds. This is a grant that we received. It was announced last year. And so that grant is to replace and upgrade 201 city-owned streetlights along the Bayfront Connector with new LED light fixtures. That's what that one's for. And then just wanted to update council, you know, this summer we're wrapping up the burn grant program in the East Bayfront neighborhood. All that funding needs to be spent by the end of September. And then the Parks and Rec engagement and outreach will be starting to get input from residents on their priorities for the city-owned parks and recreational spaces. We're also engaged in planning for the Fiesta on the Square. This will be the third one that will take place in Perry Square on September 13th this year. And the Erie Latino Leadership Association is currently seeking vendors and musicians for that event. And then last week, we announced, yeah, last week, we announced partnership with Save the Youth 814, Rides for the Rise. They're having an event that will be at Liberty Park Amphitheater and to benefit Erie's youth. And that's July 19th from noon to 8:00. And there will be more details on that, but they do have a website at STY814 for more details. They're also taking vendor sign-ups, performers and musicians, food trucks, and anybody who wants to sign up for their ride. And then we have several grants that are due this month and next month that we're working on, so we'll keep you posted on those. That's it.
Anything else from council?
Erie.
Mine was incorporated with everybody else. If there's nothing else, meeting's adjourned.
Adjourns at 7:34 p.m. President Witherspoon, Members Brzezinski, Flores, Shaw, Titus, and Troop. President Witherspoon, Members Brzezinski, Flores, Schaff, Titus, and Troop.